Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, December 6, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. LaBelle.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, and profanity is not permitted. Please restate your name after you are called. You will be given three minutes to speak. Also provide your neighborhood for the record. First registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belgeux, Paris, France. Guro Baro, that is Japanese for global. Intelligence candidate for president 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. I and the Global Intelligence Society evolve solutions to problems that are fraying the Pittsburgh and US social fabric. This is an expression that is a favorite or a fab of Ms. Gross. Using an optimal fusion of the intelligences of what we construed to be 21 primary disciplines. And we use that to interpret optimum maximum available information, especially using four languages: Hausa, Nihongo, Espanol, and Deutsch. A concern of the local government council of Pittsburgh is relations with non-local governments. So, across the United States, there are intergovernmental relations or affairs committees, including here in the city of Pittsburgh on this council. Ms. Gross is the chair of that intergovernmental affairs and educational committee. Just look at the agenda for today and you'll find that there. That is very useful to have the list, although there's a great amount of dispute about what is in there. Optimum information flow to Pittsburgh City, Pennsylvania IGRA. Pennsylvania State House Committee on State Government Chair is Scott Conklin, Democratic Party, 717-787-9473. Pennsylvania State House Committee on Local Government Chair is Arlie James, RP, 717-783-8188. Now, I encourage you citizens, optimal fluid intelligence, to contact Conklin and James about a couple of matters. One concerns the Tuk Tukite, the competence, German, of local Pittsburgh council government. As far as I can tell, there's no evidence that Ms. Gross does this. I think she should. 2021 to 2023, the council meeting start time record is zero out of 100 for Ms. Gross. It was always after 10:00 AM. That is not true for Mr. LaVell. At these standing committee meetings, he is always here, as far as we can tell, at 10:00 or before 10:00. And regarding the vote, Ms. Gross and the rest of you councillors know that you can't verify for whom she or the rest of you voted on November the 7th. See, this is no support for, it's anti-support for vote-by-voter verification for whom. This is a problem.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who is a true city of Pittsburgh servant of the public from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. Former Mayor Paduto was selected to be a member of a global group of mayors. It is clear that he disgraced himself with initiatives and actions that call into question his loyalty to our city, state, and country. How dare he appoint a board that said that detrimental school buildings should remain in Bon Air? They should not care about the property value and quality of life issues that have harmed Bon Air. We, the people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shown up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space, not a building. We have property value and quality of life to protect. The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Waste of thousands of dollars per month is occurring with Bon Air School. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community support for the sale of the building to a developer. Abuse is occurring due to the threat of block busting and intentional infliction of distress. Why won't the controller advocate for we, the people, who have been harmed by this detrimental building? Who does he serve? It's no wonder that issues with the school district persist. Checks and balances do not exist when the same person is the controller for the city and the Pittsburgh Public Schools. Is that a conflict of interest? The memorial green space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of Bon Air. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Audrey Morant. Who I do not see online. Is Audrey Morant with us? If not, that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Hello again. My name is Rachel Nunes. I'm the executive director at the Thomas Merton Center. Our office is located in Wilkinsburg. I live in the Hill District. I'm here again to keep your attention on the issues impacting the homeless and what leads folks to become unhoused, to begin with. I think we're all aware of those issues, you know, particularly the lack of affordable housing in the city, low-income housing and no-income housing. And I'm sure you've all read the public source article about the 19 eviction proceedings some of our neighbors are facing from facilities that are intended to prevent people from being unhoused. That's Second Ave Commons, Wood Street Commons. I believe only three of those complaints include grounds based on violent or threatening behavior. The rest cite stuff like untidiness and, you know, lack of participation in programming. And it just feels deeply unfair to me that, you know, those other folks are facing eviction in the wintertime. It's so cold outside. We've been talking about this week after week about the danger of that and the impacts of the cold weather on folks. Yeah, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And, you know, we're working with those folks directly, some of those folks directly. And it's, you know, causing such fear in people at a time like this, when it's so cold outside, there's not enough shelter beds in the city. It's just deeply unfair and feels really cruel. I know this is, you know, the Second Ave Commons in particular is a partnership between the city, the county, other nonprofits, and different foundations in the city. And there are a lot of issues we're hearing about at Second Ave Commons. And yeah, I, yeah, I just wanted to bring that stuff to your attention. I'll have more information about that soon. But, you know, penalizing people who were already, you know, seeking shelter and trying to remain off the streets for stuff like untidiness is just really ridiculous. So, yeah, I'll be back again next week to keep this stuff on your radar, along with some of my friends like Sam. And, yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that takes us to our standing committee agenda. The first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Members, we're going to take our deferred paper last on our agenda today as amendments are being prepared. So, that'll take us to our new papers. Our first bill is 2220.
Bill 2220, Resolution Further Amending... I'm sorry. Bill 2220, Resolution Further Amending, Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program, so as to fund the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank at $200,000 and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2221.
Well, as the chair said, we're holding it to the end of the meeting because amendments are being prepared.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Are we on 2021?
We're 2221, yes.
Yeah, aye.
Bill 2221, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant...
Thank you.
Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Mobility and Infrastructure to accept a donation from Michael Baker International in the amount of $10,000 to support the city of Pittsburgh's Safe Roots to School program.
Motion to approve, please. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. We're going to go back to the beginning and take Bill 2184 because I believe we're going to ask for a one-week hold.
Bill 2184, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements and a Lease or Leases Buy in Between the City of Pittsburgh and First Vehicle Services, a Transdev Company, pursuant to which first vehicle will furnish all work and services needed to manage and maintain the city's vehicle fleet. Costs shall not exceed $135,994,438 over a 10-year period.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
To approve with discussion, please.
Second.
And discussion, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Coghill. I believe we're going to hold, we're going to, after some brief explanation, we're going to ask for a hold for one week.
Yeah, I thought we were taking this up at the end of the meeting.
Well, once you just, you're going to hold it, so I figure we can...
Okay.
We can leave it open.
Yeah, let's leave it open because I'd rather have Brandon here.
I'll leave it open and wait for Brandon.
Okay, thank you.
So, that'll move us to our invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to vote no on the invoices this week.
One in opposition. Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the Interdepartmental Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
So moved.
Second.
We, with discussion, I need a motion to waive the rules. Director Hornstein attended a seminar that totaled 5,500, so 500 over our approved amount. And PLI has a number of purchases to the International Code Council, which is for training and exams for their staff members, but it also totals more than 5,000. So, could I have a motion to waive the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on the P cards? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That'll take us to our Public Safety and Wellness Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Coghill. Our first deferred paper, Bill 2175.
Bill 2175, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply, Inc., for the Provision of Uniforms, Duty Equipment, and Related Tailoring and Embroidering Services for the Department of Public Safety for a five-year term.
A motion to hold, a motion for brief conversation. Well, I'm not, I didn't say hold. I did, but I didn't. Motion for conversation.
Motion to approve, you mean?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
I don't have any, but I know members last week had some questions on this, so I wanted to leave it open.
Also, woman Gross.
Absolutely. So, thank you. This is not unrelated, in my mind, on principle, to the bill that we're holding to the end of the meeting, which is the $135 million 10-year proposed contract. And that one, at least, the bill is written so that the public can understand and council can see what it is that the city is committing to, which is there is both a rate per vehicle for repairs, but then there is also a total amount in the contract. The problem with this bill is, as we had a lengthy discussion last week, we don't need to repeat, that it is presented to council and the public with only, well, there are fixed rates in the contract, per button, or per emblem, or per tailoring, or per piece of uniform. But there's no total amount. So, I'm not going to vote for a bill that just says a five-year contract, and there's no monetary amount. And so, I feel like it's a simple amendment, but it's not an amendment that council can make. We need the administration to just tell us, like, what is this? Is this $135 million for a five-year contract? I suspect not, since it's uniforms. But, so, what is that amount? And council should not just vote an open-ended dollar amount. Here, just spend whatever you want, even though the rate piece is attached. But, you know, we don't want someone going off and just buying 100,000, you know, uniforms when we have only 1,000 officers. So, like, what is, what is the total? It's an easy, we just need an amendment from the administration, technical amendment.
Gross, thank you. Chief Ragland, are you here for this? No. Oh, I thought you were. Is anybody here for this? Are you, yeah, we, yeah, I would hope somebody from the administration is here.
Morning.
Hot seat.
Aren't they all? So, I would suspect that the reason why there isn't a total dollar amount...
You need to put your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Chris Ragland, R-A-G-L-E-N-D. It's Acting Assistant Chief of Pittsburgh Police.
Jennifer Olziger, Chief Procurement Officer.
Charles Schaller is manager of personnel and finance for Public Safety.
Thank you. I think the councilwoman has some fundamentally basic questions about how we can move this along. I don't want to see this held another week. These are important things that we need to accomplish. But it's difficult to disagree with the councilwoman and wanting to know the council is making informed decisions as to what we're committing to, length of time, and the amount of money we're spending.
And I just want to say, normally, uniforms is something that we would low bid as a commodity. But in this case, we are requiring them to do additional things. Quality is paramount. Obviously, in the office, we had previous uniform companies that gave former Chief Schubert, brought his shirts in that had Housing Authority police patches on them and things like that. So, we want to make sure that quality control is part of it. We require them to have an online ordering system, which is not something that you can necessarily low bid. So, in this particular case, that's why we did an RFP. So, the budget amount, again, we don't know how many police classes we're going to have each year. We don't know how many fire academy classes we're going to have each year. So, basically, the budget is their operating budget that you folks will be approving in a few weeks, you know, whatever their annual operating amount is. So, the budget is, once, whatever you're approving as their operating amount for uniforms, they cannot exceed that. Once that pot is gone, it's gone. But we don't, you know, and if they don't spend it, it goes back into the fund balance next year. So, that's why, you know, having a not to exceed is very hard to predict.
Charles?
I hope, I hope that helps a little.
Sure. I mean, this, the, by, yeah, the budget, all the budgets obviously have line items specifically for uniforms. I would suggest that possibly we could, possibly we'd be happy to submit quarterly reports, perhaps, to show how much we've been spending on this contract versus the uniform line items across the bureaus, and provide council with that oversight in that regard, if that would, that would please.
Where, where, I get a little bit nervous this time of year when councils, you know, which is their right, and I'll fight to protect it, begin holding bills because of a lack of information to make an informed decision. And we're coming down to the wire with, I think, only two more Tuesday meetings to final vote. So, I would be happy to turn, comment back over to Councilwoman Gross if she wishes to have questions as to how to resolve, not, we know where we are, how to resolve.
Just like the Transdev first-vehicle contract, there is both a rate, we're happy that there is a negotiated rate, but there's both in the title of the bill, a total amount. You're saying that there's a budget amount that's coming over in the line item, just put that amount in there.
4,000.
I don't, I don't have the number. You have the number.
Sure.
I mean, it's somewhere in the, we haven't voted our 2024 budget, but there's, you know, whatever that hypothetical number is, if we don't exceed that, that's a number. I don't know what the, do you know what the number is?
I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head, but we can, I mean, we don't, we are...
I don't understand what the, how diff, why it's difficult. If you're saying you won't exceed the line, the line item in the budget, then why can't we say we won't exceed that in the bill? You're making, you're promising not to exceed it, or you say you can't exceed it, and so, okay, fine, you can't exceed it, so let's just put the number in the bill. I don't know what the number is. Exactly, that's all I said. That's what I said in my own comments. I just need, we just need a, do not exceed my...
Yeah, we would need to probably hold it a week and get those numbers from the budget side to see exactly what...
Should I have my staff run the budget out here?
I don't think uniforms is an exact line item. I think it's combined with operational supplies, so it would take a little more...
I will get to Mr. Chair, but I do still have the floor. And so, I, what I don't like is testimony at the table that, like, well, it's a number in the budget, and so we just won't exceed that, so you don't have to have a number in the bill. And now you're telling me that it's actually not a line item in the budget, that it's buried in some other numbers that the public can't see and we can't see, and that now you're going to have to tease it out because it's not actually publicly listed. So, I don't think we can have it both ways. It is publicly listed one place or another, now you're saying it's listed in neither place. And there's, it's unnecessary to uniforms. We're going to, we're going to approve it. We want you to have this contract, but like, what's the dollar number? It doesn't need to be a mystery. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Warwick, I saw your hand went up.
Well, just from the, just from last week, I think, because there was a list, right, an Excel list with the, with the rates, and I think we were, they were going to give us an updated list that actually had the rates in, because the rates weren't in the list that we saw last week, right? There would be like, you know, I don't know, whatever, like, t-shirt, such and such. And then it would have, and then there was a line, like a column for cost for the shirt, cost for tailoring, but there were no amounts in, in that column.
I'm not sure. I thought Joshua had sent you everything, so if he didn't send you enough, we will, we can go back and get you what you need.
I mean, am I, am I remembering correctly that he, that... I thought they weren't, I...
Yeah, I thought, I thought he had provided you with all of the line items, prices.
Oh, was that sent this week? Oh, okay, okay.
So, you do, you do have it?
Yeah, so, so last week, there, we, we pulled up an Excel list, right? And in the list, it was like, it was really, really long, right? It was literally every item, right? Like, you know, whatever, shirt. And then in the list, there were columns. There was a column for the price of the shirt. There was a column for the tailoring of the shirt, and maybe, I don't, but there were no numbers in those columns. They were just blank. And the gentleman who was here, whose name I forget, he was at the table yesterday.
Joshua.
Joshua, yeah. He said that it would be fairly simple to just update those Excel lists with the actual, I mean, the idea being, and this is in addition to what Councilwoman Gross is asking for, but the idea being, if there's, you know, just to be sure that if we do have a not-to-exceed amount, right, that the contractor doesn't charge, like, is like, oh, well, we can, we can spend up to this much, so it's the end of the year, and let's start just throwing in $400 for a tailor because there's no, there was no place for us to see.
Yeah. Every order that place, that they place has to get a J.D. Edwards purchase order and be approved. They can't spend anything without our, each bureau's authorization.
At any rate, but it was just to give some more clarity into the prices and the costs. I don't know. Anyway, I...
I, yeah, I thought that was provided. I apologize if not everyone received that.
Okay. Before going to second round for Councilman Kraus, just two quick things. One, historically, they don't put not-to-exceed amounts because the spending on uniforms varies so much year to year. So, just as an example, for EMS, last year, it was $24,000. This year, it's, it's going to be 27,000. And it can fluctuate very much, which is why they don't put not-to-exceed. But to Councilwoman Gross's initial question about the numbers, we actually do have the numbers per our budget. And so, under admin for 2023, it would be $4,008.73 for EMS. It is $27,673.41. For Fire, it is $105,193.48. OCH is 40,000. Police is, it's actually not listed for Police for '23. No, excuse me, for Police, it's $730,637.74. If we wanted to move this today, we could then add those numbers as an amendment for our bill on, on Tuesday. Second round, Councilman Kraus.
Then, I, second, I'm sorry. Then I, I think we're ready to move then. That's all I was going to ask for. I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm coughing.
Can I ask the budget office to just add that up for us, the council budget office?
That's where I got it from.
You got it from RIA?
I got it from our budget director, Peter.
Peter, Peter, could you give us the total, please, so we can amend this? Like, now? We're, we're, okay. Well, okay, we'll just add it at the table then. Can someone want to read the numbers off again? I don't mean to, I'm sorry to do this, but...
I have the floor.
Yes, Councilman Kraus.
Oh, all right. I forgot.
Thank you. Can we, can we then move the bill? Give Peter the time that he needs to do accurate calculation. If it, we can put that in on Tuesday. If we don't have it, we'll recommit and we'll do it again. But I'd prefer that we, we move this and, and amend on Tuesday, please.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Any abstentions? Two abstentions. Affirmative recommendation. I'll work with the budget office so that we can have an amendment for Tuesday to show the budget light was reflected.
You're welcome.
Affirmative, so that's an affirmative recommendation. Thank you all for being here with us today.
Thank you so much.
That takes us to our next bill, which is Bill 2185.
Thank you. Thank you. Be safe.
Bill 2185, warning to amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II, Fiscal Article V, Special Funds, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund 237.02, Establishment of the Stop the Violence Fund by establishing a maximum annual dollar amount allocation to the fund, and amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II, Fiscal Article V, Special Funds, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund 237.03, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund by changing the annual percentage budgeted for outside community-based, non-governmental organizations, and establishing a maximum annual percentage to be allocated to the Department of Parks and Recreation.
A motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'll defer to the sponsor, Mr. LaVell, to, I think he might have explained this last week, but...
I did. But to make it plain and simple, it puts a cap at how much the Stop the Violence Fund can receive at $10 million, which is approximately what we're going to receive this year. It's like $9,800, something like that. It also increases the amount that can be expended internally to 50% and allowing of that 50%, up to 10% of it to potentially be used within our Department of Parks and Rec... and allowing of that 50%, up to 10% of it to potentially be used within our Department of Parks and Recreation to support our rec centers, support youth programming, things of that nature that fall in line with Stop the Violence activities and getting our kids off the street. Um, can also be spent with OCHS and other things of that nature. And over about the next four years, it would save us approximately about four to five million dollars. Madam President, now go down the line.
Thank you. So I have, you know, I have a lot of questions and concerns about the Stop the Violence Funds. Not that I don't see some people doing amazing work, I see some people doing work that they should definitely get even additional dollars because they're doing so many amazing things. But I see people getting money that we're not sure what they're doing. Part of that is that this council, Ricky Moody, came up with a form that we were to use, that they were to use and to complete so that we could track and understand what they were doing, and they chose not to use that form. And with absolutely no, no notice to council, just chose to use the form that they picked. So I have a lot of concerns about the way we're holding people accountable and how we're tracking these dollars, which I feel about most grant money that we have right now. And we need to really get out of the grant-making business. We should be using the dollars that we have for the things we're responsible for providing to, to the public. So overall, in general, I just have concerns about grants, period. Including grants that I've just, you know, allocated over the years. I just feel like if people come to expect them, and, but yeah, people also want to expect that their roads are paved, their, their, their police stations are open, their firehouses are operating, and, and that ambulances aren't falling apart on, you know, on the way to the hospital. So there's a lot of things people expect, but we, we aren't meeting all those things. But I do know that we've received many phone calls from people from the community, a lot from the East End, who said that they are concerned about the way the dollars are used. And so I, it's the inability that we have about, for tracking that I have concerns with. But as I said, I know groups that are doing amazing work, some amazing work. That doesn't mean, and some of them will probably get additional dollars, because there's a chance here now to increase the amount, correct? The amount of the grants.
So.
Do you mind answering?
Sure, interrogatory.
Yeah.
Potentially, yes. So what I've suggested, and I've said this to the administration, is that the first year out, they allocated $1 million in grants across our city. And my argument is that's just enough for really good organizations to just continue doing a little bit of work really well, but it doesn't allow them to scale up, to do that work at a much larger, more impactful scale. And so it's actually my argument that we should be probably doubling the amount of grants that we're giving out so that organizations across our city that are doing this really important work can do it at a much larger scale and be much more impactful. With that being said, I think it may be helpful at some point for us as a body to also have a conversation with the administration about how they're planning to scale up, because they are in conversations about how they're planning to scale up and use these dollars in a more meaningful and impactful way. And I think that's probably a conversation we should have with them.
So I will say, a more meaningful and impactful way might be to actually open our community centers, north, south, east, west, central, 24 hours a day, so people have a safe place to go, and doing the things that we're supposed to be doing with those dollars, um, providing safe places for people and kids to get resources and to get, you know, to get stuff. So I, I mean.
Part of the conversation.
And that is part of the conversation, but I mean, it, we're moving money without having, I think we should have the conversation and then move money accordingly. Um, for me, I'm just gonna, so just saying, I'll abstain today and have further conversation with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough. Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm in complete alignment with the spirit of the bill and what you wish to accomplish with it. I then fall into alignment with the Council President about our level of accountability and for a, a, I can't think of the word, I want a full audit, if you will, of, of results. And I think that's reasonable to request. So I'm gonna, I will vote with you today, but I still am going to lobby you for lower amounts than what we're seeing the cap be here in the, in the bill that you put forward. I hope that doesn't change my mind on Tuesday. Uh, but, you know, we've always been able to be very reasonable together, and so I'm, you know, I'm going to continue to keep that line of communication open with you. And again, I don't know if it's possible in here or if it needs to exist somewhere else, if we can do a, a requirement, lack of a better word, for better accountability and, and audited results of what we're seeing, which I understand are very difficult to measure, I do get that. Uh, but, you know, we, we are charged with protecting the taxpayers' dollars, I mean, that's what we do here. Um, and, you know, I met with our, our controller, Rachel, the other day, and she and I are very much in alignment in, in a lot of the things that we talked about. And, and we spoke about the fundamental purpose of us being here, which the Council President spoke to, our first priorities, you know, we provide for the public safety, we make sure facilities are open and operational and, and maintained, that we plow the streets, we fix the, you know, or plow the snow, we fix the streets, we turn the lights on. All those things have to come first, uh, which is a very difficult budgeting decision to make, but that's, as I say often here, we're not afforded the luxury of maybe only the difficult decisions of yes and no. And so we begin with that fundamental piece before we, uh, before we expand into other areas. So, um, again, for the sake of repeating myself, I really, I applaud you. I, I believe in the spirit of the bill, and I'm really glad you did the work on this. And maybe we'll come to a different dollar amount.
My response to one point, just in terms of auditing, one, I would encourage all members, if you have not seen it, Poise does provide, Poise is who, um, awards the dollars. And they do provide a, I think it's a quarterly report in terms of how those dollars are being expended and what the organizations have done. It's not the form that Mr. Moody put together.
Don't make me even comment on this one.
But I'm just, it, it would do us all good to actually review those reports so that you have an understanding of how those dollars are actually being spent. But if you want, would like to work on additional language that would require annual auditor, or whatever that may be, more than willing to do that.
I have, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've served in a number of different capacities where when dollars were expended, the check was always a two-signature check. Um, and I love the idea of perhaps having two separate, undisconnected oversights to say, you know, to have a more balanced review of how dollars have gone out and a different, you know, perhaps opinion as to the results that we're achieving with it. I won't be here to monitor this, um, you know, that will be left to you and, and our new members of council. So the role that I do play now is to, is to make the decision to allocate the dollars, and that's why I'm taking it seriously. So I appreciate it, thank you everybody for the time.
Uh, Councilman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wholeheartedly support these amendments to the original bill or to the original fund guidelines for a couple of reasons. One, to be fiscally responsible to exact some austerity in the next couple of years to cap it at $10 million really makes a lot of sense. Those are going to be millions of dollars that we can cobble together from different places to ensure that over the next few years, before we retire debt, we have a working government. So I'm really, I'm really supportive of that element. Moving down to 50% of the annual budget expenditure expenditures to outside community-based organizations makes sense to me. Um, however, I want to, and I want to make sure the Council President hears this as well, because I wasn't sure if she was aware, that, um, Council President, I want to make sure that you're, you were aware that the Forbes Funds, we had been, or I'll talk to her about it later if she's not. Um, the Forbes Funds is now going to be, um, is going to be helping these outside organizations, which I wasn't aware of before, but I learned at the Council Budget Hearing for this department that there will be oversight, there will be organizations outside of the Poise Foundation working with these organizations to help them grow their capacity, to help them get organized, to help them get strategic plans, to help them find diverse sources of funding so that they don't always have to rely on the city should these funds go away. So I, I'm really enthusiastic about that piece, because it's something that I've been sort of, and we, many of us have been calling for, and I'm very glad that that's budgeted in. And then the 10% to be used for the Department of Parks and Recreation, I mean, the work that they're doing already is anti-violence work, we just don't call it that. And so to allow for some of these funds to be used to offset or to grow that programming, it's really great. So I'm supportive for all those reasons, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, yeah, thanks. So I guess my first question, still interrogatory, is, uh, so is this, is the, um, did you work with the administration, so are they comfortable with the $10 million? I mean, they feel like they can do the things that they want to do with the fund with, with that max in place? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've spoken with them about it, and they're comfortable.
Okay, okay, and then also, um, so including OCH, so just, just to be, so, so this funding covers OCHS, you know, Office of Community Health and Safety, and now is also going to include Parks and Rec, and then will also include the work being done by the community groups, that's just sort of for the public. Um, one thing that, that I do want to say is, you know, yes, the, the city, you know, it is our job to make sure that our facilities are open and our, you know, and, and all, and all of these things, and, and our streets are safe and et cetera, but for the past 10 years, our budgets, our, we, we have not spent our money in doing that for, for communities that are experiencing high levels of violence, right? We, we just, we, we've been spending money elsewhere, we have not put money into our rec centers. And, um, and I would be all for in, in, you know, I would be all for tripling our Parks and Recs budget, right? Like pouring money into our rec centers and rebuilding them all and having beautiful rec centers in every neighborhood and Parks and Rec staff, staffing them, and after-school programming for all of our kids so there's always a safe place. But at the end of the day, we just haven't done that, right? It hasn't been a priority. And so now, this is a very small amount of money at the end of the day, and, and for all of that time, we have counted on our community groups to do that. And so this is sort of the first time that we, you know, we're, we're kind of giving them, and at the current levels, really a tiny amount of money, 15 to $30,000 a year. If you look at the types of numbers that we see go across this table, that is so little. Um, so, um, yeah, and, you know, and, and while we have been relying on them for, for so long to do this, I sort of think it's, it's, it's a little unfortunate, our, the, the extreme concern that they might somehow misuse the money. I, I do understand that there are organizations that are maybe not as robust and, you know, and, and it can be hard to spend new money that you aren't used to having and, and tracking all of that. But as Councilwoman Strasburger said, the Forbes Fund folks are going to be there and to, to help make sure that everything's documented and that, you know, these organizations can grow, so. Uh, and I also want to just say that the, the Parks and Rec, you know, what we are doing by adding Parks and Rec is to supplement in places where, where these community organizations don't have necessarily the capacity, right? Whether that be in terms of staff, or whether that be sports programming, or, or whatever, that, that we are going to use Parks, it's almost like starting to do with Parks and Rec what we should have been doing with Parks and Rec for, you know, 10, 20 years, right? But for, for various reasons, weren't able to or, or chose not to, so, yeah, I'm very supportive.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I am reading the text file, and it says that, um, actually, I can't see the strikeouts the way it's cut and pasted, but I think it struck out from a minimum of 60, and it, you're reducing it to 50% of the annual budgeted expenditures from the fund shall be allocated to outside community-based non-governmental organizations. I think it, we should clarify, um, when we've talked about grant funds, um, and that so far, it's only gone out as $1 million. But then there's also, James, do you have the paper filed? I really could use it right now, because I can't read, the strikeout's on my phone, thank you, that was really great timing. Thank you, James. Um, that's, you, so let's say we have a hypothetical $10 million allocation. Um, so 50% or 5 million is required to go outside of the city. Um, does that mean all by grants?
As currently constructed, yes, it does not, the ordinance does not specify that it has to be a grant.
It doesn't, so for example, we have, um, if we have a subcontract, which is a different thing than a grant, the way we have contracted with AHN or with the Roots team to do homelessness outreach, that would be under the 50%.
Yes.
Under the outside 50%.
Yes.
Okay, just for clarity's sake, because sometimes, you know, I think we subcontract too much, and we should bring more things in-house, like speed humps installation and flux posts installation and painting, and municipal DPW employees, similarly, we're talking about bringing, I think, in-house some capacity for Parks and Recreation, et cetera, but that is different than grants. Secondly, so if 50% or $5 million is being spent, allowed to be spent in the organizational chart inside the city, or in the capital budget inside the city. Um, and then you say 10% can be used for Parks and Rec, and I'm actually not finding that. So is that 10% of $5 million, or is it 10% of $1 million?
10% of the 5 million, so up to.
Right, so it's 10% of the 50%.
Yes.
10 times 50, 10% times 50%, so it's only $500,000, not a million dollars, is what, in a hypothetical budget of 10 million, could be allowable for Parks and Rec, which is still a significant increase to our Parks and Rec budget, because our Parks and Rec budget is only 1% of the city budget. So doubling and tripling it would only take it to 3%, right? So gen, roughly, I forget the exact numbers for 2024, honestly, since they're not final, but, you know, in a $670 million budget, our Parks and Rec budget, I think, is less than $6.7 million. Um, so, which is too small. And so while it's nice to have another $500,000, especially for the org chart, um, that's only a 1%, or 10%, that'll be a 10%, less than 10% increase to the Parks and Rec budget. Just kind of getting a ballpark on those numbers. Um, so I would actually kind of like to see more. Again, the, I support the goal of investing to stop the violence. Um, like a lot of members, I kind of feel like the jury's still out, we've just started. We're not sure if we're, the things and, and activities, and who is doing the activities. Um, we have, we just can't see how effective it is yet. And then secondly, the, this is not in the amendment, but, you know, the first year was 2021, just as a reminder to everybody, and that was a 5% match to the police budget. Again, it is not reducing the police budget, if we double the police budget, the dollar amount of this contribution also doubles. It's just a match. In 2022, 6% was put into the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. In 2023, 7% was put into Stop the Violence Trust Fund. And so we're projected to do almost $9 million more in 2024, right? Oh, closer to 10. But there's currently $9 million unspent. And the expenditures for 2024 are budgeted at around 11 million. So there would be $18 million in the fund, and we're only projected to spend 11 million. So there's, there's an extra 7 million. Um, and then the following year, it would be at the 10 million for 2025, as passed today. So that's also kind of something that I'm not, I don't feel is really resolved by this amendment. So, um, I, I'm not sure why to leave 7 million basically fallow in the trust fund. Um, so, you know, I'm happy to support today, but I think that also needs to be addressed separately, thank you.
Um, second round, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I also wanted to mention that at the, at the budget hearing for Stop the Violence, well, one thing is that, there is one data point that was highlighted, and that was a 29% drop in shootings, I believe. So that is, or was it in homicides? Okay, so that is, I mean, if, if there's anything that we can measure, right? But, um, you know, you, as I said then, you can't necessarily measure the benefit of an after-school program or a sports program, you can't, that's not something that can be quantified. Um, but what, uh, what was said at the hearing was that in this next round of funding, right? You know, the organizations applied, um, and that council members will be. You know, the organizations applied, um, and that council members will be provided a list of organizations that have applied and been at least pre-approved. And if there are any organizations on that list that ra, you know, that raise concerns, that we will have the opportunity to, you know,
Strike.
Strike. Yeah. Anyway, so I just thought that was worth mentioning, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam President?
I just want to say, I think you can also say the drop in homicides, it wasn't shootings, it was in homicides, can also be credited to our amazing EMS who's struggling to get ambulances, too. So I just want to say, I think it's, I think it's a combination of things. I don't, and it's also, I think sometimes, you know, people change what was reported. And so I think sometimes there's a lot of that going on, too. Manipulation of data. So I don't know what, I don't know what the reality is. I'd like to think that the reality is that people, it is working in some ways. And I do think it is working in some ways. I do want to say, because I know, you know, firsthand, at least one group that in my district that received funding that's doing amazing work. The other two, I couldn't tell you a thing that they did positive. So.
Councilwoman Coghill?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I share a lot of the same concerns that members do. I will tell you that what I do know of Stop the Violence in the grant awardees, um, I've had nothing but positive experiences. I see them in the schools. I feel like a lot of them are doing really good things. That being said, I don't know the scope of it. I don't know, you know, how many organizations and how, how much money we're doling out. But, um, but I am encouraged as to what I've seen, uh, through Mr. Jones and Cornell and the people I've worked directly with. So, so, and, and it, as Councilwoman Warwick said, it's hard to put it on a scale whether it's working or not. Uh, we could look at the drop of murder rate. We could look at things like that. But, but what I've seen, I see them in the schools. I've been on locations with them. Um, they've been very encouraging to me. But again, I don't know the scope of things. So I do share concerns as, you know, the future grant awardees and as to exactly what they're doing with the, the money and how maybe we could have a post agenda or something, just to all be well-informed as to where this money's going. But applaud your efforts to cap that money. I think that was a good idea. Um, you know, moving forward and free up some, some money for other things. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to say real quick, I also appreciate Cornell Jones. And I, I'm not suggesting that we don't fund Cornell, the REACH program, any of those things. So I just want to make that very clear. Because I know people on this table called some people in the community, tried to make that argument to them, but they called me and told me what you said. So, um, I will say that's not what I'm trying to do. What I'm trying to do is make sure that, um, we're using just the funds that are, that we see are effective and that we know seem to be effective and then have a conversation, a broader conversation about what we can do with those dollars, including opening our centers and different things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Public Works Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill 2214.
Bill 2214, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with CDR Maguire, Inc. for project design management services and reviews in connection with various City of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the preliminary engineering and final design phases, increasing the total not to exceed amount to $3,610,896.63, an increase of $119,019.4, reimbursable at either 100 or 95%, depending on a specific project.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion, please. Second, thank you. Jeff, I believe you're here. Why don't you come up and stay with us for a while? Because there's, we're going to spend a whole lot of money here. And I know council would be infinitely elevated to, to know how and why we're doing this. Thanks for coming.
Good morning.
Morning, Jeff.
Jeff Scallikin, acting director for DOMI.
Okay. If you're, go ahead, Jeff.
Sure. This, uh, so what this resolution is, we have a consultant service that helps us oversee all of our PennDOT federally and state-funded projects. So they help us with the review process, like when we have a big bridge. Um, so when we get the plans and there's like a structural analysis, we give it to them and they help us, um, you know, help, help us with the preliminary engineering or, um, the final design portion of the project. So we do get assistance from a consultant. And the, we pay them through a federal grant that we receive through PennDOT. If it's a bridge, we get paid 95% back. And if it's a, um, like a road or, um, traffic signals, we get reimbursed 80%. So the 119 is either the 20 or the five local dollars.
Gotcha. I'm happy to support. I ask members to do as well.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2215.
Bill 2215, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Aid Liberone, Inc. for Costs Associated with Construction for the Sylvan Avenue Multimodal Path Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $1,645,770.37, of which $1,077,744.25 is reimbursable.
Motion to approve, please, with discussion. Jeff, we'll turn it over to you again.
Sure. This is for, um, the project that's on, on, on the road, on the right of way. And it's between Hazelwood Avenue and Home Roll Street, Home Roll Street, apologize. So the project includes sidewalk curb construction, raised intersection and street tree planting.
I'm good. Councilwoman, do your wish.
Yeah, so I do have a few que, well, first about the timing. Uh, I know the community is curious about the timing. Um, and also with regard to the traffic island that I believe will be in, in, on Hazelwood Avenue as part of that project.
It will be.
It will be.
Yes.
Um, and so the question about that, that I had, just since, since we're here and we're talking about it, um, is, uh, so there, there's been longstanding complaints about big trucks driving up and down Hazelwood Avenue. And, um, if this traffic island will make it so that we can know, you know, stop, stop trucks from moving up and down the avenue.
Uh, I don't think it will stop trucks, but it'll make them slow down to be more cautious driving through Hazelwood on the road.
Okay. Maybe we can talk about that.
Sure.
Just sort of, you know, um,
I'll get back to you on more of the time. And when everything's going to get, take place, too, I'll get back to you on that part.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. And then we'll definitely want to connect because I know that there are parking concerns because Center of Life is right on that corner. So they have a lot of activity and, and, you know, parking is very limited.
We can, you and I could check in on all of it.
Okay, okay. Um, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2216.
Bill 2216, Resolution Providing for an Amended Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of the Sylvan Avenue Multimodal Path Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $1,532,585, an increase of $532,585 from the previously executed agreement.
Motion to approve, discussion, please.
This is to add money. We were able to receive more money from the feds and the state. So this is just to add money to that project.
This is grant minus?
Yes.
And that's on our side.
This will be an 80/20 for the $532,000. So 80% federal, 20% local.
Councilwoman Gross?
Just a, I think a technical amendment or question? Maybe it's not. I just don't understand what this says. So at the very last, uh, that's a number and not a dollar amount? What's in the parentheses?
The 54358?
Yes.
That's the agreement number that it's, I think, referencing above. I asked the same question, actually, today.
Got it.
Asked the same question.
Got it. Can we just put like the little number symbol in front of that? Because I thought, I really thought it was just like a dollar amount that, because it's so similar with so many numbers in the bill. Can I just make a verbal amendment, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So, um, on 2216, um, and the last sentence, kind of inside the parentheses before the number five, can I just add a number sign?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to amend?
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the amendment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the bills amended? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2217.
Bill 2217, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Michael Baker International, Inc. for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase for the Penn Avenue Signals Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $766,365.62.
Second.
Sure. This is, uh, Penn Avenue in the Strip District from 17th to 30 tech, 32nd Street, apologize. Um, this project is to replace traffic signals, construct concrete bump outs and add ADA ramps.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2218.
Bill 2218, Resolution Providing for an Amended Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design of the Penn Avenue Signal Improvement Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $983,660, an increase of $230,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 80%.
Second.
This is to add $230,000 to the previous project on Penn Avenue that I just spoke about. And, uh, we'll make a note that that 5488, I'm sorry, 54486 is going to be the contract number, okay?
Excuse me, and that's
80/20.
Uh, that's, uh, grant dollars as well, too.
Federal, 20% local.
Great. Thank you very much. And, Madam Clerk, do we need to verbal that? Um, the, the, what do you call that symbol? I don't know what to call this symbol. Do we need to, he, he just said they'll do it on their end.
I'll, I'll fix it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm good, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2219.
Bill 2219, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with MS Consultants, Inc. for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase for the California Avenue Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $847,398.45, reimbursable at 100%.
A motion to approve, please.
Second.
A brief discussion, I should say, yes.
Sure. This is for us to enter it to a contract with a consultant. They're called MS Consultants. Uh, this will give us notice proceed for the design portion of California Avenue Bridge. And it's all 100% of, I'm sorry, the $847,000 is all 100% federal funds.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for being here, too. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
That takes us to Land Use Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Wilson. Our first, the third paper is Bill 2000.
Bill 2000, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure Under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances. That certain structure known as Ella and Emil Keller House, located at 201 North Mertland Street in North Point Breeze, in the 14th Ward City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and there is no cost to the city.
Motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Councilman, I didn't realize you were on.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2084.
Bill 2084, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with various community-based organizations for the implementation of the 2023 Neighborhood Economic Development Program and to provide for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $500,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2089.
Bill 2089, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code, Article Five Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses at Section 911.02, Use Table in Article Six, Development Standards, Chapter 914 Parking, Loading and Access at Section 914.02, Off-Street Parking Schedules, and Adding Section 912.09B Childcare Accessory Use at Chapter 912, Accessory Uses and Structures, all to amend childcare uses and standards.
Motion to hold Cablecast Public Hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for Cablecast Public Hearing. And Bill 2230.
Bill 2230, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure Under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances. That certain structure known as Benai Israel Synagogue, located at 327 North Negley Avenue in Garfield, in the 11th Ward City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and there is no cost to the city.
Motion to hold Cablecast Public Hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for Cablecast Public Hearing. That takes us to Recreation, Youth and Senior Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Our new paper is Bill 2229.
Bill 2229, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Department of Human Services, OCR Key Service Corps, Located at 1 Smithfield Street, With Regard to the 2023 AmeriCorps Summer Program, in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,936. This payment is match funding for AmeriCorps members who work with the Department of Parks and Recreation during the 2023 Summer Program.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. We have one, our first supplemental paper is Bill 2270.
Sorry, computer. Bill 2270, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of Innovation and Performance, Parks and Recreation and Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Rec Desk LLC, to provide permitting and scheduling enterprise software at a cost not to exceed $24,500 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2284.
Bill 2284, Resolution Amending Resolution 758 of 2022, a Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Departments of Innovation and Performance, Public Safety and Mobility and Infrastructure, to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with EDOC Technology LLC, for Licensing Services and Maintenance and Support Services to provide document management services, to include Department of Mobility and Infrastructure documents by increasing the approved amount by $42,190 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,604,968.83 over a period not to exceed 11 years.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion?
Second.
Uh, yeah, so this is just to extend the, uh, contract. And then my understanding is that there will be an RFP put out to replace the, the, the document management system, probably with E, well, I don't know, right? EDOCs will be one of the options. But this is just to extend it for the time that it takes to, to do the RFP, et cetera.
For 11 years.
So it's for, it's for document management to try and, you know, with all the signatures and whatever. I think we have a, um, we have a number of, um, sort of a patchwork right now of tools and we'd like them all to be together and use one tool.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Um, what I'm seeing is, is just an extra 42,000.
Yes.
Correct. And that's not 42,000 over another 11 years. It's kind of badly worded. I suspect it's adding one year.
So my understanding is the contract is ending. We're coming up to the end.
And we're extending it for 11 more years?
No, 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 no.
Okay. So because that's how it reads.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So, you know, I'm fine passing this today, but it'd be nice to have a kind of tactical amendment fixing that. I also want to acknowledge how much city operations, including at the clerk's side and on council, we've transitioned to E Documents and how different that industry has changed since the beginning of the pandemic. And while there were very few technologies two or three years ago, um, that there's, there are more companies in the field. And so I think it's actually a really good time to be developing an RFP, to see what other prices are out there, um, because we're just using it so much more. Uh, you know, our final papers at the beginning of the, before the pandemic, a, a paper after it was voted didn't go to the mayor until a councilperson physically signed an actual piece of paper. Um, and that's not true now. We have electronic signatures, right? And so, and that goes through contracting and vendors and all that kind of stuff. So I'm, I, I think it's great to just spend $42,000 until we can really see what the field is, see what our current needs have changed dramatically throughout every department, all 3,000 employees. But if, if, I'm happy to vote yes today. But if, if, I'm happy to vote yesterday, but if we could kind of just fix that confusing last sentence, that would make me so happy by Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
I just want to say, these bills shouldn't even be coming on our agenda unless they had an RFP, or unless there's some explanation. And it's not, if it's so important, if, if it's so important, somebody should be working on it ahead of time, making sure we're ready. I'll abstain today, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two extensions, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, beginning with Bill twenty-two twenty-two.
Bill twenty-two twenty-two, resolution amending Resolution Eight-thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-one, which authorized the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with core business technologies for software, equipment, and services related to payment processing and a cash sharing system for the Department of Finance in order to add services for the Bureau of Police by increasing the approved amount by sixty-two thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed two hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred one dollars and sixty cents over three years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two twenty-three.
Bill twenty-two twenty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of public safety, and the director of innovation and performance to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with IK Systems, Inc. for security, camera maintenance, integration, and support services for a total cost not to exceed eight million, thirty thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars and eighteen cents over five years.
Motion to approve discussion.
Yes, second.
Yeah. So, I, I, yeah, I guess for this, I mean, so this is for maintenance of existing cameras. I think it warrants a discussion, just sort of the, the necessity of cameras and, and whatnot in general, like whether or not we expand use of cameras. That is not what this is. This is about maintenance of existing cameras. So I don't know if the.
Is that Gwen?
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gwen, is this you? No, who's here? Oh, please come up. Okay. Thank you. What am I doing here? Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Director, good morning. Spending the morning with us, Charles, huh? Okay, Director, good morning. Easy, yeah.
Good morning, Heidi Norman, Director of Innovation and Performance.
Okay. And Charles Showers, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Safety.
Great. So would you provide counsel with an overview of the bill and the expenditure and what we're gonna hope to achieve with it?
Sure. If I, I'll just give a little bit of a, a discussion about it, but I, I believe we're hoping to hold the bill for a week since the director's not able to join us today. But if you like, I can go into a little bit of detail, just to. So we, uh, have a, um, contract for, uh, maintenance of our, of the city's camera system. We did RFP for that. The contract expired in June. This IK Systems was the winning bidder, the most responsible, or most responsible bidder. And this would be to request a five-year contract with them to maintain, to resume the work maintaining, upgrading the camera system as appropriate.
Mm-hmm. So, so Charles, you're, you're speaking under the direction of the director that the department wishes us to hold this for a week?
Correct, yes.
So do you wish further discussion, or should I just motion to halt?
Just motion to halt. Oh, go ahead.
Councilwoman Coghill?
No, I just wanted to be clear. You know, I did talk to Director Schmidt about this. I wanted him at the table to answer any questions that members might have, but it is imperative that we pass this before the end of the year. I don't know if Patrick's here. I don't see him here now, but.
He was.
But there's eight hundred thousand dollars from two thousand and twenty-three that needs to be carried over. So, so I just want these members to get to that comfort level, whether we have to meet, you know, during the week, or we can talk it out here if you want now. It's up to you all, but, uh, yeah, okay. That's all. That's it. Thanks.
May I motion to hold on a week then?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That takes us to Bill twenty-two twenty-four.
Bill twenty-two twenty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of innovation and performance to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Appalachian Regional Commission and Connect Humanities Appalachian Digital Accelerator Program for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to support a digital equity position in IMP. A local match of twenty thousand dollars shall come from the Innovation and Performance Operating Budget for a total project cost of fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second. I like that. Great idea.
With discussion? I just have a, just my own personal curiosity. What is the digital equity position?
It's a robot. It's a robot.
Heidi Norman, Director of Innovation and Performance. In two thousand and twenty-four, uh, in the budget, there is a proposed digital equity program analyst that would be focused on broadband internet and telecom, digital inclusion, and digital equity. And this grant will help to support the salary for that individual.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's great. I love it.
Well needed.
I agree.
Councilwoman Gross?
Sorry. I suspect you know the answer to this question, but if not, um, uh, we can follow up, but the state's municipal, the state's broadband trust fund, Pennsylvania's broadband.
The broadband authority?
Authority.
Yes.
Like a year ago, they didn't have language on how they were going to be appropriating the federal funds. So a lot of federal digital equity funds have gone to the states. And so Pennsylvania has chosen to create an authority. And then the language was really up in the air, and, um, how has it turned out? Are we eligible at all for any of those federal funds for digital equity?
So there were three funding opportunities, um, from the, the money that came from the federal government. One was for the state's, um, overall broadband plans. Obviously, we're not eligible for that.
No, that's not obvious. That's, that was my exact question.
That was for the state, for the state itself to create a broadband plan for the state. So we aren't, as a municipality, we're not eligible for that one. The second one was the Broadband Education and Deployment Fund. And that is to create infrastructure to provide internet for all residents of Pennsylvania. We are also not eligible for that either.
As the way the Pennsylvania authority wrote their rules.
That is correct.
So we were applicable under the federal rules, but the way our government in Harrisburg wrote the rules and how they would distribute those funds for Pennsylvania.
Correct.
They made us ineligible. Are we ineligible because we're an urban area? Or are we ineligible because we're not a corporation?
So it's in part because we're an urban area. It's, it's actually because within our franchise agreements with, um, our telecommunications cable companies, all residents are required under the franchise agreement to have services available to them. The way the broadband authority chose to write their notice of funding opportunity for the, the BEED, that's what it's called, the BEED Grant, um, it is focused on areas which are completely unserved with no access whatsoever, or underserved, but really, really their focus on the unserved across the Commonwealth, and everyone in Pittsburgh, even if they can't afford it, has access. That's why we're not eligible. The third grant opportunity is the digital equity program, and for that, we would be eligible. So we are eligible for one out of the three opportunities of that pot of money that's coming through the broadband authority.
Thank you for answering that question.
You're welcome.
It was not anything that I had followed for about the last twelve months, and it, I, I really, um, value how closely you pay attention to so many of these issues. I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick?
Just since you brought it up, so in our franchise agreements, do we have, do we have language for, I mean, for them to support folks who can't afford, like, I mean, they have access, but, no?
No, we cannot, uh, through the franchise agreement, the way the FCC has written the legal language, we cannot, um, structure pricing that is required by the ISPs. That those, those sorts of rules are being looked at, and in fact, I was just reading an article that the FCC has passed new regulations as of sort of late November that is beginning to look at specifically, um, the past practices of some ISPs in some locations of what we would call digital redlining, um, where in certain particularly poor neighborhoods across the country, that they actually pay more for slower and worse services than wealthier and usually wider communities who pay less for faster services. Um, the FCC is now trying to address that specific practice. So I'm hopeful that we will see the playing field become a bit more level, but, um, it's my contention that it is high time that Pittsburgh jumps into the fray to make sure that this is not happening in our community.
And do, just outside of the agreements, um, do Verizon and Comcast, do they offer any reduced rate, the same way that PWSA or what, whatnot offers reduced rates?
So, yes, there are, of course, there are different pricing levels that they each offer. And then in addition to that, the federal government has the Affordable Connectivity Program, also referred to as the ACP, which provides a thirty dollar a month subsidy for those who qualify. And of course, all ISPs pretty much have an ACP offering, and both Comcast and Verizon do.
Okay.
Councilwoman Strausberger?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Norman. Um, I'm gonna, we've discussed this issue at length in the past, and I, you know, I admit I haven't followed it as closely in the last few months either, but, um, I wanted to ask a question I think I know the answer to, but I wanted to ask it anyway. Does the county currently have a comparable digital equity coordinator position for us to coordinate with once this position is filled?
Not that I am aware of currently. Um, as you know, there's a new administration coming in, and so that may change as of the, as the result of work that the county and the city have been leading with a number of other organizations in a group called the Pittsburgh Digital Equity Coalition. There have been about twenty organizations working together over the past year or so to create a community strategic plan to address these types of issues very directly. And it would be, um, my hope that, um, in the new administration, that we see a comparable position like the one that I'm requesting for my office.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you for that. Um, that takes us to Bill twenty-two twenty-five.
Bill twenty-two twenty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Atlantis IT Consulting Group LLC as needed for an enterprise-wide warehouse supply and inventory management solution at a cost not to exceed two hundred thirty thousand dollars over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two twenty-six.
Bill twenty-two twenty-six, resolution amending Resolution Seven-nineteen of two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Cohen Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for renegotiation of the city's cable franchise agreements with Comcast and Verizon and for consultation on development of fiber and wireless telecommunications assets and policy by increasing the approved amount by sixty thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed six hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cents over four years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two twenty-seven.
Bill twenty-two twenty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the office of the mayor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Encapsulate to upgrade the city's customer relationship management system and our related capabilities and processes at a cost not to exceed five hundred ten thousand dollars over one year, subject to appropriation by city council in future budget years.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion?
Second.
So I know, Director, you're very enthusiastic about this one, so I'd let you say a few words.
Yes, so. Do I need, right, I know. Do I need to introduce myself, or? Okay. So I'm very excited about this one. As you know, we have been working toward a time when we have an enterprise-wide customer relationship management system. This will, um, replace our current three-one-one Qsend system, which, um, has limited functionality for the needs of today, including those of city council. I'm very pleased to let you know that, um, the, um, RFP was highly successful. We had a number of applicants, and that Encapsulate, um, is going to provide to us a sales force platform that everyone in the city will be able to use, not only for three-one-one calls, but for constituent services and relationship management for all of you, and it's something that, um, I'm really thrilled that we're going to be able to, um, finally implement, um, a badly needed system that is expanded in terms of, uh, the, the quality and the, um, ability for us to provide various requirements that everyone has.
Yay.
Thank you. Yes, yay.
Councilwoman Warwick, is that the floor?
Um, just so, just, so, so will this have capabilities that will allow us, so in addition to like, take, you know, when we're getting calls in from constituents, link that information to our newsletters and, and other various communications and things like that, so that we don't have to count? We're doing all that by hand at this point.
Precisely. So the, the spreadsheet's full of lists of names and the pieces of paper and the contact lists and the, and, and, you know, how many three-one-one requests did this person put in and where, you know, where did they used to live and they moved to this other place? All those kinds of things, like, will be, you will be able to see that and really have a robust conversation with, with the people that you work with every day from your districts, that you'll really get to know them and be able to communicate with them in meaningful ways and make sure that the services that they so badly need are provided.
So, so in other words, I mean, just to kind of give a visual, someone calls, this is just for council members, I guess. Someone calls the office and it's like, you know, Jane Smith with this address. You type that in and boom, it's all there. All her three-one-ones, all her, just sort of pretty much anything she's, would, would it also include like real estate transactions that she might have or things like that with the other, you know, just whatever she might have going on with various departments at the city?
I don't want to say for sure. I don't, I don't know to that, to that level of detail, but it's certainly something that I can look into and answer at a later time.
You know, like if she put in a permit application or something, that, that type of thing.
Yes, I think any business that, that, um, a constituent has done with the city ought to be available to you through this. I mean, it's sort of the, um, I'll call it a hub, right, where you can sort of see how the city has been servicing, providing services to a particular address or a particular family or individual.
And, and will we all be able to, I assume, get trainings and whatnot on how to use this great new system?
I will be insistent upon it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, again.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. The, um, uh, uh, just a small story. The, um, the state house representatives, um, about a year or two into my term here at city council, we had a state rep turn over. The seat turned over, and the incumbent, when they got to the, the newly sworn-in state rep, when they got into their office, all of the old constituent records were in the computer. Yeah, no, they were there, right? When I walked into my office, there was nothing, right? And certainly there had been council people for a hundred years for this district, but, or, you know, at least since nineteen seventy, whatever. But there, um, there were no records. Um, and so there were some paper records. I'll give them credit for that. There were some paper records, but, um, and so we're, we are starting from scratch, and that's not how the state house does transitions. So the constituent complaints, you know, let's imagine for the. So the constituent complaints, you know, let's imagine for the state, like, you know, my, my SNAP benefits were embezzled and my SNAP account is empty and I should have $3,000 in my SNAP account, right? That's a constituent that I've taken, you know, a case that I've taken to a state rep. That would be there. And so we would have that same benefit, right? So not only just in transitions, but we have staff, you know, our, our staff, God bless them, typically don't stay as long as we do. So I've had a number of constituent cases, you know, representatives who are manning the phones, thank you all, staffing the phones, you know, every day, day in, day out, but I hear an address and I'm shouting through the wall, oh my God, is that on Morningside Avenue? Hold on, I know, you know, that, there's, there's 15 years of history that they don't have, and we try, and we try, and we have spreadsheet after spreadsheet, but the spreadsheet isn't linked to the spreadsheet from five years ago and is not linked to the paper files that were here on that case on Morningside Avenue, and the, you know, city's biggest landslide and rotating wall, that, you know, are on paper. And it's, you know, that I've been there and what did PWSA say and what did PDPW say? Those are all kind of just in my brain, or I search through 70,000 emails that I've kept and be like, okay, here's the backstory. So that wouldn't be, literally those pieces of information, some are not written down anywhere, some are digital, some are on paper, those could be consolidated and should be, and it will help us solve problems faster and better. And that house was sold where those complaints were coming from, right? So that's a different person, but that address is still there.
Right.
So I, I really think this is going to be transformative, and it's long overdue, so thank you for pushing this over the finish line. I just want to give a shout out to my current chief of staff, who's been here for several years, who has been really a loud voice on the council side pushing for this, because again, we know other levels of government are way ahead of us on this, and certainly other cities, other bodies in other places, so we're a little behind, and so, but Salesforce is not easy. And migrating data is not easy. And so, you know, that's piece of information in my head about Duffield and the landslide and the piece of information from the paper copies from 15 years ago, they're not automatically going to appear there, right? And so garbage in, garbage out, we're all going to have to learn how to use it and how to put the information in. And then it sounds like we're also going to really have to readdress kind of disclosure and privacy policies, and that's probably work that we'll have to do. I feel like we have kind of some level of protecting constituent information. I know we have some kind of, you know, self-written policies in my office, but we probably will have to get to that, because really, the more information you have at your fingertips, the more protections that you have to have in place for the residents.
Correct.
So, so, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you Director.
You're so welcome.
Madam President?
I just basically wanted to say that I'm just concerned about who would have access to what. Would it be we have access to our constituents or other departments have access? Those are the things I want to know about.
Right, so thank you for asking that, because I do think it's actually...
Let me just say real quickly, Director, you do a great job. I may be very cranky about no bid contracts, I'm always going to do that for every department, but you personally do a great job in your department.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because it, what you're asking is actually a really important topic. So the way these modern systems work is quite wonderful, because we are actually able to control the level of access that individuals have. So for example, you know, a clerk in a public works division is going to need a certain level of access, the, the folks on your staff are going to have a different level of access. So we're actually able to customize what different folks are able to see and what kind of data they're able to access within the system, and that's going to be an incredibly important part. And I do want, I do want to comment on something that Madam Gross said, and that is that it is really important that we're keeping data secure. It's also really important that you guys know this isn't snapping my fingers and suddenly all of your data that's in your spreadsheets and on paper arrives, and like, it is all there, right? So, so we're going to be working together with subject matter experts from your team to make sure that the data is even in the system to begin with, right? Because you've all been keeping it individually.
It might be dead before this happens.
I hope that's not true, I hope. So the good news is, is that over the past few years, we've been, my team has been working so hard on modernizing so many different types of systems in the city that we've actually gotten really good at this, and I have to say, things, things tend to flow pretty smoothly, but it's not going to be without effort on your part and the part of the folks that work in your office. There's actually going to be a great deal of activity and collaboration between our teams.
You don't have to worry, because we have a lot of people that call our office and want to remain anonymous, and different things.
Understandable.
So that's the kind of stuff I want to make sure we protect.
Right, and if they, if they're remaining anonymous to you, then we don't have a record of them, because we don't know who it is.
They usually tell me, but they say, don't tell, they don't even want the police to know or somebody else.
I understand.
Sometimes I report things from me instead of from them.
I understand. And we will have to create processes to ensure that those people are able to get the services they need without being identified.
Okay, good.
Like, we'll have to think about, carefully about how to do that well.
Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I see other guests in chambers that are doing a lot of head shaking as the discussions going on.
The chorus is behind me.
I just would like to provide you the opportunity to come up and share, it seems like you have some things you'd like to share. Gwen, Heidi, or I mean...
How about Gwen, she does so much, Gwen.
No, Wendy.
Come on up.
I'm having a brain fart. Come up, please. Good morning. Yeah, so at the risk of broadening the conversation too far, because we do have budget hearings starting at 1:30, right? But I, I just wanted, you guys do a lot of work, you, and, you know, and I see you back there agreeing with a lot, and I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to come up and say what might be on your mind, so please.
Thank you so much, good morning. Councilman, thank you for inviting us to the table. Rebecca Ranallo, Senior Manager of Neighborhood Services for the mayor's office. I was just so pleased to hear the discussion taking place today, because it further shows us what we have seen throughout this whole process as we went to RFP and engaged with all of our department stakeholders, which was that there is just broad consensus across every single department, council, and the mayor's office on, on what our needs are for the system, and the, the different challenges we're trying to solve on behalf of our constituents are, are really the same. So it made the, the selection process for, for this system actually quite simple, because we all have the same values and, and needs when it comes to what we want this system to do. So IMP has been fabulous guiding us through the technical side. Wendy, as you all know, is a Pittsburgh institution and...
And a District 2 resident, I will add.
Yes, and has seen so many different, you know, eras of the 311 system as it continues to, to get better and better. So I'm, we're really excited to work with you all and your staff, and happy to answer any specific questions.
Hi Wendy, good morning.
Hi Wendy Urbanic, 311 manager. Just that we're really excited about this opportunity, and it's just going to make 311 and our whole city shine brighter.
Will you sleep better at night?
I will, I will.
Hi Gwen, welcome.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
I'm Gwen Morris, Assistant Director of Business, Technology in the Department of Innovation and Performance, and one of the things I'm most proud of is the collaboration between all of the departments. Our applications team and our business relationship managers worked with each of the departments and mapping out many of their processes and trying to determine their needs. So this was an instance where we incorporated comments and requirements from all the departments, and it truly was a collaborative effort, so much so that all of us voted for the four finalists, almost the same ones, and all of us supported the award to Encapsulate. So we're really looking forward to it.
It just shows what we did when we work collectively and cooperatively, and we can achieve great things. And yeah, it's a really good story, and I just wanted to provide opportunity for it to be told. So thank you for coming up, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'm good.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schlossberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am like, I'm like holding myself back from just giving a standing ovation, I'm just so excited about this. It's going to help so many different departments throughout the city, council included, and a couple of just specific questions. One is, do we think that this will then allow us, for those who like could opt in, like by giving their, their telephone number, could opt into a system by which we could then send out text alerts or phone robocalls when there's like a road closure or something else, in the way that some utilities are able to do because they're customers and they have that information, they feel like opted in? So not taking people's info without them asking to be, but to say, hey, check mark, check this box, we'll contact you by robocall or by text if there's a, a need to do so. Is that, is that something we'd be capable of?
It is on the Salesforce platform, and the Salesforce platform is very robust, and all of those capabilities can be configured for the system, but in some cases it may cost additional dollars. So again, we will follow up and work with each of the departments and determine which of their, which of the particular capabilities are they would like, and which are in our, our base package, and which others would be considered enhancements. But it is available in Salesforce, it's just that it has to be configured.
Okay. Another question that was, you know, actually Councilwoman Warburg's question and a really good thought, we, we currently obviously have MyBerg, and you could probably log into Qsend from our own phones. Does this come with an app though, so that we, like as we're handling concerns or, you know, get a call and we're out in the field, we could enter it and track it from our phones on an app rather than kind of a clunky way that we do it now?
Yes, so it will come with a mobile app similar to how Qsend came with MyBerg, and I believe there will also be expanded mobile capabilities for who we call our responders. So someone from Environmental Services, for example, in the field, looking into a complaint, should have an app on their side that'll make it easier for them to process the follow-up information. Wendy, correct me if I have misstated any of that.
No, that's correct.
Yeah, just...
Interrogatory, yeah.
Yeah, so ju- just to sort of like, will the app, so just for example, right now, you know, someone asks me something and I send an email to myself, and then I send an email to my staff, and then I send, you know what I mean? Or I save their phone number on my phone, and when I get a new phone, I'm like, oh God, please let these, these contacts like pull over correctly, you know? So that, I mean, will all that be, like, would I be able to call someone from the app, for example, like their number comes up and I just...
If that's a requirement that you would have, we can discuss that with the Encapsulate to determine if we can configure it to provide that for you.
Okay, I mean, even just for the num, sorry, wouldn't have to be calling through the app, but even for the number to be available so that I don't have to save all my contacts on my phone, I just have it, right? It's just there.
We will be able to update all the customer information that we have to update. So we can take everything from our current database, all the contact information for our customers. Originally, when we started with Qsend, we actually uploaded the county voter registration list, and that's what we built on, so we'll have all that information that we can transfer in.
Okay, interesting, okay, thanks.
One of the reasons we really liked Salesforce, but especially this vendor, is because of how adaptable their solution is, and how much, you know, it can evolve based on how our needs evolve. So there's going to be a lot of, we, we're not going to be, you know, locked in to the way we design it in year one, it can, can continue to improve as our needs continue to develop, so.
This company usually does two or three major upgrades a year, so.
My last question, it's for you Wendy, but then anyone else who has anything to add, is I can imagine how it will, it will change the way that we can track over time, as Councilwoman Gross, like, you know, her example was perfect and spot on, and how it'll affect our offices. How do you think it will impact 311's operations, maybe in unexpected ways that we wouldn't be able to anticipate, but, you know, what are some other ways that you're thinking that it'll improve?
Mostly, it's going to help our customer experience a lot. It has the capacity to use AI to help guide customers to find the correct issue type, which is one of their biggest challenges. It's going to introduce a chat feature, which a lot of people have been interested in. So I think the whole overall customer experience will just be so much improved.
Great, yeah, no, I, I'm enthusiastic about that. I was going to open the AI can of worms, but I also know that we have a whole task force working on like the guardrails and legal guardrails we need around that, so I'm glad that that's also happening in concert with this, but just the efficiency then too, you know, and to be able to not have to, for, for the, for the staffers themselves to have a little bit of assistance when someone's literally just looking for navigating the system, right?
Right, another great feature is if we get a request that involves two different departments, they can both work on that request.
That's great, that's great. Okay, that's it, oh, I'm happy to take any other comments, but, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Wendy, I'm so glad you mentioned the data populating, right? How do we populate data? So it's different than having a, a phone number that I personally load. The state house reps, we often call them to get a constituent's phone number, because it's also preloaded for their whole district. So just for those of us who are much, much, much younger than I am, there used to be a phone book for everybody, right? You could literally, you got a free book that was delivered to your house, and so it was, you know, that person on Morningside Avenue, you could just look them up and call them back, and we don't have that in our office. If a constituent calls our office, we don't even have voter, we don't even have caller ID the way it's stored on your telephone, on your cell phone. So again, sorry to the constituents out there who have ever called the District 7 landline or any of the council members' landlines, right? When you call 255-2140, and if you don't leave your phone number, we've never been able to call you back. And so that's, you know, we can, we, and sometimes we, you know, and we try, we, we look online, we might try to Google you, we might try to figure out, we might try to knock on your door, we call our state house rep and say, hey, do you have the phone number for the address at blah, 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 or for this person? So, will we have that? Are you going to load that data for us?
The data that we have, we can't, we can't make data just come out of the blue, but if we have the data, we can load it in.
Somehow, can we explore that, the state house somehow is purchasing phone numbers?
Yes.
They are purchasable, and they're actually not that expensive. So, well, the, the county data is definitely free, most of us here at this table have probably worked with it or had our hands in it, because we do in, in the other parts of our professional life, but it doesn't have phone numbers, but those are, those are easily purchasable. So that would be so hugely helpful. And what also, I'll just put in a plug while you're here, if we could get phones that actually do catch our caller ID or caller information and keep it, like, like everyone in the world's cell phone does, like what is that number that just called? That would be amazing.
That's coming, and we'll be presenting that to you.
That would solve a lot of problems too.
Different piece of legislation, but yes.
Okay, I really appreciate that. So yes, we will not only have the fancy software which we're voting on today, it's going to be populated by much, much augmented and better complete data than we have now, and then separately from that, we're getting better phone systems. Woo-hoo, this is fantastic.
Well, we've got her doing it, that's great, thank you.
That's amazing. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's it.
It's the happiest I've seen her in five years.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all. That takes us to Bill 2228.
Bill 2228, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with the Wilson Group for the lease of multifunction devices and managed print services to include MFDs, all-related hardware, integrated and standalone, support, maintenance, and supplies, software, software-related services and solutions at a cost not to exceed $1,600,000 over four years.
Motion to approve, brief discussion. So we're going from something everyone loves, CRM, to something everyone hates, which are printers, and so I, I guess I'll let you, so I know that it will be not, some, most printers, not all printers, and let you clarify.
For many years, we have had a, a vendor that provides all of our leased printers on what are called the multifunction devices, those are the ones that can copy, print, scan, and fax. We decided to go to RFP to look to see if we could find a vendor with better pricing and better services, and we have decided on the Wilson Group. And so this is a request to authorize us to award the RFP and enter into a contract with that group, and that would mean that early next year, we would begin to see the leased printers, which are currently with AMCOM, it's a Xerox company, that those would begin to disappear in favor of the printers coming from the Wilson Group. This does not, however, include those desktop printers which we may own. And so if you look in your offices and you see a, a small printer on a desktop and it does not say AMCOM on it, then that is probably one that we own, and that would not go away because we own it. This is for the leased printers, not only in offices throughout our departments and This is for the leased printers, not only in offices throughout our departments and bureaus, but also in the print shop, which is overseen by my office.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
May I register a vote on 27, which I missed?
Yes.
Right, yeah, please, thank you.
Any opposed? Affirmative, recommendation. That takes us to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first new paper is Bill 2205.
Bill 2205, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for Allegheny City Brewing located at East Ohio Street and Emlyn Alley at no cost to the city.
Notion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative, recommendation, Bill 2206.
Mr. Chair, does it make sense to read the remaining bills altogether, which is a lot, Madam Clerk, but they are all parcel transfers from the city, of city property, to the Pittsburgh Land Bank?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if we could read Bills 2206 through 2213.
Bill 2206, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 10th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 50K, Lot 257, Council District Number Nine at no cost to the city. Bill 2207, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 10th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 50G, Lots 45, 46, 53, 55, 112, and 128, Council District Number Nine at no cost to the city. Bill 2208, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 11th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 50M, Lots 167, Council District Number Nine at no cost to the city. Bill 2209, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 30th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 14R, Lots 230 and 238, Council District Number Three at no cost to the city. Bill 2210, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 22nd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 223L, Lot 101, Council District Number One at no cost to the city. Bill 2211, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 22nd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 23K, Lots 298, 299, and 300, Council District Number One at no cost to the city. Bill 2212, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 18th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 15R, Lots 230 and 281, and Block 15H, Lot 291, Council District Number Three at no cost to the city. And Bill 2213, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 5th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 10C, Lot 26, Block 27B, Lots 392 and 393, and Block 26P, Lots 156, 157, and 164, Council District Number Six at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Great, so I just want members to know for the record that these are all parcels that are going from the city to the land bank, and I'm happy to say that for the uses, that they, they all reflect the priorities that council set for the land bank after our very robust debate on, you know, really prioritizing green space to go to the stewards of that space that have invested so much time, effort, and, and sweat equity in improving those parcels, and then also to affordable housing in the city across different neighborhoods, different council districts. So I'm, I'm really happy to see these parcels moving forward, and very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative, recommendation. And now, Madam President has a, a bill she would like to put on our agenda, so I believe our first motion is to waive the rules of council.
So, motion to waive the rules of council.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules have been waived, Madam President.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been amended.
And then I would like to bring back the bill. It was the Homewood contract that we had held, well, we were putting it forward as, to repeal. It was approved, I put in paperwork to repeal it. We held for a legal opinion. I have one opinion from our city solicitor, a different, slightly different opinion about the process from our city council solicitor. So I'm going to make a motion to send this, ask Madam Clerk to send it to Controller Liam to give us his opinion on the process and the contract, and we'll work with the wording with our city solicitor in the clerk's office. So we'll hold for one more, one more week, and we want the opinion to be within that week.
Just to make sure we're on the table first.
What'd you say?
Motion to bring Bill 1980 back to the table.
Yes, yes. Dan Fries is over there having a heart attack, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1980 is now open on the table. Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, does the bill need to be read for the public edification? I don't know, or process? Do we need to read the bill?
Do you have it?
It's been read multiple times, it's in legislature.
Do you have it, Ashley? Could you read it? Okay, thank you.
Bill 1980, resolution repealing Resolution Number 428 of 2023, effective July 9, 2023, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh, to enter into a professional services agreement with Homewood Community Sports for community liaison services at an amount not to exceed $300,000 by repealing it in its entirety."
So now you wanna make a motion to hold?
So the motion to hold, and we're, just so people know, we're gonna send it to the Controller, his office for some opinions and advice. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill be held one week. So that now exhausts our agenda. Before going into meeting announcements, very briefly. Oh, shoot, I apologize. 2184 is still open on the table. I was trying to get to the next thing. Brandon, you wanna start coming forward? It's already open, so I'll turn it over to Councilman Calkil. This is our very first bill for the fleet contract. I forgot we left it open, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you both will, you know, introduce yourself, and I, I wanna say something briefly, then you could take it from there.
Chief Procurement Officer, Office of Management Budget.
Brandon Walton, Senior Manager, Fleet, Office of Management Budget.
Okay, well, thank you for both being here. As you know, we had an executive session on this just the other day, and being on the Equipment Leasing Authority, we've worked closely together in the last couple of days to try to address the concerns I've heard, whether it's from the executive session or even, you know, offline with other council members. Ultimately, we're gonna have to hold this for one week, and you both know that, and that's technical, I want you to answer to that after we discuss it. But I felt it was important to discuss this, and hopefully we can all get to a comfort level for when you do come back. This way, you know, we're not starting next week. We all know we're in a time crunch, and this expires at the end of December, so, so, so with that, you know, I'll let you speak to the actual.
Yep, so after the executive session, multiple conversations with council folks, we went back to FBS, we were able to, we understand it's the desire of council that they want a shorter-term contract, so we're going to be amending the legislation for a six-year contract with renewal options. We need to make some adjustments to the pricing. We are, we're also able to get a little bit of savings. It would, if for 10 years, it would have been 900,000, we're gonna do six years, it would be a little bit around 500,000.
The savings?
The savings, additional savings in the contract, so we just, we don't, we wanna rush to amend at the table, we wanna make sure all the numbers are correct, you know, and everything is, is good, and, you know, adjusted in the budget as needed, so we just, you know, we don't, we don't rush, we wanna make sure that we do everything correct.
Okay, and let me just say, you know, one good thing in this contract is I feel like most members are comfortable with the company. We've been dealing with them for 19 years, they provide us with good service, and quite frankly, we didn't really have much interest in, from anybody else to even, you know, take on such a contract, so, so that's one good thing. Again, I appreciate you addressing the concerns at a length of time, and the price tag, right? And it's important to mention, there's two different streams of money here, there's non-direct and direct. Non-direct is the maintenance end of it, which makes up about 60% of the total cost. Non-direct is, you know, engines that are unforeseen, and, you know, transmissions and chassis, and everything else that goes along with that. The savings that they, this company agreed to on top of the original contract was close to $1 million for the 10-year contract. But being that we're going to a six-year contract, they're willing to go to 500,000, not to 900,000, correct?
A little bit more than that, but.
More than 500,000?
Quick math.
Okay.
525, something like that.
Well, that helps, I mean, you know, I was hoping for more, to be honest with you, but, you know, every little bit helps. I think it's the years that we're taking the contract is, as important as the, the actual price of the contract. So I wanna say the savings that they're offering us, or the discount, I'll say, is from the non-direct part of the funding stream, meaning those are real savings, because the direct part for the engines and motors and other things, they're billed as we go.
Correct.
So, so we're getting that 500-plus thousand dollars off, really off the top, and it's, it's clear savings. Whereas if we exceed our amount, what was, what was the total amount for the direct? Do you remember that, Brandon?
The target or the non-target?
I'm sorry, target. I keep saying direct.
We knew what you meant.
Just to make sure everybody's on the same page, so it's, target is your preventative maintenance, and non-target is your repairs such as.
Got it.
Engines, accidents, so on. So the savings is off the top of the target, because, I mean, that, that's what can be.
Changing the oil, wiper blades, it's general maintenance to every.
Right, so they're giving us that discount towards that amount. On the, on the non-target side, we're billed as we need repairs. So if we don't need that repair, we don't pay for it. So the amount in, that's written into the contract or the budget, is, it's a not-to-exceed amount, and, but it's not a guaranteed spend amount.
Right, and to clarify, Brandon, because we, we've spoke to this, the, the non-targeted, if we exceed that amount, and, and we're, it's really a guesstimation on your part, setting aside however many millions of dollars for the non-target, if we exceed that, we have to come back and amend it, and we have to pay for it still.
Correct.
Yes.
We would have to come back to the table and.
If we don't exceed that, we get refunded 80%.
We just don't spend it, because that's the non-target, we just don't spend it.
Okay, so, okay, well, you know, I just wanted to make kind of the, you know, beginning stages clear, hopefully next week, we don't have to have a lengthy discussion, and I'll open it up to members, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, I just wanna thank you for the, for going back and trying to address council's concerns, but I also wanna thank council members for doing their due diligence and making sure that we're doing the best. But again, every time there's an opportunity to, to discuss contracts and renegotiating things, it seems that Councilman Calkil somehow is in the mix, asking to make sure you go back. So I think it'd be great to put him on some negotiating team, I really do. But yesterday during the briefing, Councilwoman, I don't know if you mentioned that there was another company involved, I don't know if you.
Veolia Corporation.
Yeah, is that the same?
Owns First Vehicle now.
So they own the co, they own the company?
Veolia and Transdev merged, and that company purchased First Vehicles.
So what I'm wondering is, is that the same Veolia?
Yes.
Okay, that was here, okay, that's all I wanted to know. I thought maybe it was a different part, a different parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to take the opportunity to, you know, voice my support for First Vehicle and the experiences that I've had with them over the years, and the, you know, your everyday working man and woman that is in there on the ground and providing for the fleet, and they really do, do an excellent job, and, you know, for a difficult job that we ask them to do, and I just think it's important to, to say that often.
We don't give them a lot to work with.
No, you know, and, you know, you know, when you.
Appreciate that.
You know, I talked with Councilman Calkil about this a lot, when you look at the totality of our vehicle, it doesn't live in silos, it, it is, you know, there's multifaceted, and meeting a myriad of different needs throughout the city, and it's constantly ebbing and flowing and changing, and, you know, you don't expect this accident, or that repair, or this, you know, and, you know, those parts are out, and we can't order this, or that vehicle's too old for, but they juggle all the balls, they keep them in the air, and they keep the fleet afloat, they keep the fleet afloat. I like them, and I like them a lot, and I just really wanna put that out there. And then second, when you say there are options, this is my question, when there are options for renewal of the contract, is that up to the 10-year period? Is that?
It would be. There'd be two, two-year options to renew, you know, so in years, you know, you're, the beginning of year six, we would start looking at what would those next years look like, and what that pricing would look like and everything, since we're not knocking, not locking it in now, whatever the market is from, in six years, five years from now, we'll start looking at those out years.
So that was gonna be my next question. The renewals are not locked in at the prices that we are now, which could come back to bite us, possibly. It's a crazy world out there with pricing, I just, it blows my mind every time I, I go to go, wow, what? This is how much? Like, how did that, how did that happen? You know, so that, that concerns me. I like the idea that we were locking it in for a 10-year period, especially as volatile as economics has proven to be over these last number of years.
We will be clear, we will not be locking that in for 10 years, we're only locking in six.
For six, okay, I appreciate that, that's, I mean, we, we need to.
Who knows where we'll be in six, you know, five years from now.
You know, when, you know, yeah, yeah, we don't know.
We're gonna be dead.
No, you won't, please stop saying that. It might be.
Just saying, I'm not that young anymore.
But appreciate the work of members and your due diligence, I appreciate you and what you are willing to work with us on, the councilmen, and so, thank you, I'm happy to support, but we're gonna hold today, correct? Can I offer the motion to hold for one week, since I have the floor? Nope, everybody is okay? Okay, Mr. Chair, may I? Okay, then I'll offer the motion to hold the bill for one week.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill be held for one week. Now that exhausts our agenda. We do have meeting announcements, but prior to that, I do wanna simply acknowledge before you leave, CJ.
Yes.
This will probably be her last council meeting.
Are you leaving us?
She's gonna be retiring after 30 years of service to the city.
Oh, it's good to be here. Oh, we have to do a proclamation.
That's what I said.
We'll do a proclamation.
Cool, CJ, you're leaving 'cause I'm leaving, I know, that's it.
So I just say, I think it's gonna be you, Councilman Kraus, Councilwoman Harris, and myself, all hanging out together. Because I know he misses Councilwoman Harris.
I do terribly.
We're gonna come to public comment.
You'll be missed, CJ.
Twice a week.
You'll be missed, you will, you will, yes. Yeah, we, I'd like to say we hold the torch for a very short period of time, and then Yeah. We, I'd like to say we hold the torch for a very short period of time and then we let it go, regardless of what we do in our service to the city, right? That's what we do and it's okay to let it go. Yeah, so thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
It's not yet.
All right, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings with the Commission on Human Relations as well as the Carnegie Laboratory of Pittsburgh, as well as our Oakland Improvement Business District and our Pittsburgh Downtown, this Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, excuse me, which will all be chaired by Councilman Kraus. Okay. On Thursday, December 7, at 10:00 a.m., council budget hearings will be held with the Department of Public Works chaired by Councilman Kraus. And, but that's going to change. Council, Madam President will chair that. And at 1:30 p.m., council budget hearings will continue with the Parks Trust Fund chaired by Councilman Kraus. Are you going to do that one? Okay, so we'll, we'll update that. And Parks and Recreation, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. On Friday, December 8, council will hold budget hearings with the Pittsburgh Land Bank chaired by Councilwoman Gross. And then on Tuesday, December 12, council will hold our regular council meeting at 10:00 a.m. And the standing committee meeting on Wednesday, December 13, at 10:00 a.m. to register to speak. Please fill up the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration closes 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. Also, just as a reminder, council's holiday party is tomorrow evening.
Yeah, in your district.
Where is it?
Penns mechanical.
And so thank you to Lee Ann Wilson and the clerk's office.
I was really trying to announce it to our colleagues. I forgot, honestly. Until I saw the email come across a couple of minutes ago. Five to seven. With that, we need a motion to excuse the absent member or approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.